So we will open the planning board meeting for September 8th, 2020. Anybody who is here and recording, that is fine. You just need to let us know. Is anybody recording tonight? Okay. We will just do a see who's on the call since we don't have a sign in sheet. We'll just have it for the recording because we are recording it. So we have Megan Lightcap, we have Chris Mastriani, we have Alan Schlesler, Marcus Phelps, Dave Sutton, Jessica Thorne, and Richard Utzinger on the call currently. All right. Seven o'clock town planners report, Alan.
Yes, since our last meeting, quite a bit's been happening that I'm picking up because of the fall season is upon us. I recently talked to an engineer from the McDonald's restaurant in regards to a site plan modification. What they like to do is right now because of the COVID, they have only one speaker when you order. Inside of the site themselves, they want to add an additional order lane. But you'll still have the same traffic configuration, but there'll be two lanes come in and order. So your food products can come out quicker. Traffic, I have seen traffic out on the parking lot and people on college highways. This will help relieve some of the safety items. They will be coming in for a full, you know, for a site plan modification. Also, I had a Zoom meeting with Rob Leveque in regard to Jen Nalesco. She wants to use the code parking for Louis V's or walk in the water. It's also called. And this has come up before, but the parking is in excess of 200 foot separation, which is allowed in our chapter 185. And the road is heavily used. There's no sidewalks. There's no crossing locks. So it would be, I don't think it'd be a very good idea to allow people becoming going to a dinner slash bar recreational area and have them crossing my Grove Road without proper precautions. And so he brought up, there was a few other items we looked at. It really seems like the only alternative, which when she had come to us last year was there's some vacant land right across the street. But I guess she hasn't been able to come into an agreement on renting or using that parcel. The biggest question I've had over the past week, which I, we sent you a copy. It's a rough draft. So it's referred to as 302 Granville Road. And what it is, it's a does everybody have that? It's easier to look at the map. It's a, it's these accessory sheets together. Does everybody have a copy to look at?
Yeah, yeah. Hold on. Give me one minute. I could put it on the screen.
Yeah, we sent it to each member also, so they should have it there too.
Hold on one second. Okay. So can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
It has a lot of information on it because I had, I've been talking to everybody along that parcel as well. I've received in a dozen, at least a dozen inquiries. Number 302 Granville Road is parcels being sold. By Ted, who lives at, he's at the very first house. His wife is the, involved in the trust. And when it happened back in, back in the 2000, the Mr. Milnick put this 60 foot right away in and most of the people on the street were related to him as well as they were related to the Ricoli family. I don't know if you know, they used to be hillside construction. And there was a 50 foot, there was a 60 foot right away put in to access those parcels along that. What's happened is the very first parcel that's got Ted, he's got a frontage on Granville Road. The, the next two parcels up don't have frontage, but because they had proposed a subdivision, I think at the time there was nobody overseeing if they thought the road was going to go in as a town road and those two houses were allowed. What's happened now is the larger lot, they want access to it, but the biggest problem is it has no frontage on a town road. And back in 2000, 2000, the planning board said that road should be made to be a town road. This way here, all the parcels will have the necessary 200 foot frontage and an R40. And it brought it up into 302 Granville Road. That never happened. And there was a letter sent by the Public Works Director at the time, basically saying that if the property, if this address is going to be developed, the subdivision that was never completed, this dress will have to be finished. A formal layout of the road, meaning a full depth survey, if you put right away stone bounds, road base, gravel in place, binder course and overlay as well as installation of drainage. So basically everybody, and I had, before I had come across this, I was basically telling people they don't have frontage on the town road. So you cannot be, it cannot be a buildable road. And told them that the road has to be built to town standards. It'd be a town road. And they would then have frontage along a town road. 302 Granville Road, you know, the 60 foot right away.
Sorry.
It's okay. The 60 foot right away comes into parcel number four, which is also noted as 302. And what I, a couple of people have said is they don't want to build a subdivision. A few want to just have the one large parcel themselves. Another individual who might be coming in under town comments was looking to get two lots out of it. And I told them that you would have to have come in for a town road. We'd have to know the width, you know, have to meet all the town standards. If 302, if they brought the town road up to their property, then they would have 50 foot right away and it could be considered an estate lot. If they wanted to actually get two lots out of it, which is almost 24 acres, a cul-de-sac would have to be privately put in to get 200 foot frontage for one lot and then a 50 foot off of that lot. But uh, so I've been receiving a lot of calls. A lot of people are anxious because it's 24 acres. And it's enticing them thinking they could get multiple lots out of it. But I don't believe they can get multiple lots because it wouldn't be able to meet the town criteria. So I just thought I'd bring that up to you. It's it's an enticing, you know, it's being advertised. And there's, where you see number 300, there's another seven acre parcel that could possibly be built and the way it stands now, you would not be able to build on that. And the houses that are shown.
What does a town require for?
What is, it has the minimum 800 feet long. It has to be, it could be, they could ask for a waiver, 20 foot, 22 foot wide pavement with curving. And I had driven up there a couple of times. Right now it's, it's heavily, it's a hard compacted gravel all the way up to where you see Matthew King. He's the one that's been, been gaining the gravel surface for all these years. So it wouldn't take an awful lot of excavation to get the proper base in. It would just be a matter of any necessary drainage that's required. So all of, it's, it's been put on the MLS and so there's been a lot of interest in it. Of course, a lot want to put six lots up there. And I basically had said that because of the length, I don't think that would be allowed unless it went to a flexible subdivision, which then that would open another, you know, avenue. But a couple, a couple of the people are going to zoom in under public comment. So that's been pretty business sight. Also, also we had continued talks on number 42 Depot Street condominiums with Rob Leveque. That's the parcel that abuts the rails and trails. And they have talked to the police and the fire. The only one that they have not talked to is Randy. And that's for public water and for sewer. And that would be an important thing because right now I believe it's going to be a moratorium put on subdivisions with public water. Town is because of the drought, the use, everyone being home because of the virus. They're approaching a certain amount of, they have a certain amount of water they can draw down on and they're almost exceeding that right now. So that's something that they have, in fact, I think, believe they're going to have a, a meeting today on that. The project at Krabby Joe's, which was off of Congamon Road, which we had talked about, and we gave them tentative approval that they could continue a restaurant, even though it was, hasn't been used for over two years. A gentleman has pulled out. So that project right now is at a standstill. There's been a couple of people interested in putting some condominiums in, but because it's in a business zone, condominiums would not be allowed because you can't have single family residences in the VR zone because it's such a small zone. And it's, and it's only an acre. So you wouldn't be able to get very many in there to anyway, to make it worthwhile. This past week, the first phase of the Greens East off of Tannery Road has been paved. And they're going to be listing those, those lots now because they did, they did, I believe a couple of the members signed the covenant in lieu of bond. And I think Michael, Michael had it notarized and it's been on, it's on file now.
You know, Alan, I gotta get you a copy of that. I don't think I ever emailed you a copy, but I have one. So I'll get it over to you.
Right. I have, I have a copy that would, it was filed at the registry without any signatures on it. So and I, I figured we'd be getting one with the members and then notarize on it.
Yeah, no, I have that. I'll get it to you.
Okay. Also, just to update people, John Wally has purchased the property along College Highway on the east side of the road. And which abuts Country Club on the east side. He's, he's actually, if you've been by there, he's actually removed some of the trees. It was always our thought that they would actually bring that down and rezone it as an extension of Dr. Walt's property. But he, he's going to keep it open, agricultural open space. There's a letter that you might have received that was sent out a couple of weeks ago to asking if anybody was interested in being on the subcommittee for the short term. And the only ones I received back was Kyle, the building inspector, said he'd like to be on it. And there's Ms. Pat Odeum, who goes on White Street. She would like to be on it as a as a single individual who abuts a property. And I haven't really, haven't received anything else at all. The last thing is the police department wants to put on a eight by 10 shed on the north side of the existing animal shed, animal shelter, which they should, they are allowed to do under an accessory. But they just wanted to make sure they're doing everything incorrect. So I basically was going to tell them that they just have to go to the building department to take out that necessary building permit. It's, it's, but it's right against the garage part of the animal shelter in between the rear of the police department. And that's it right now.
All right. 710, public comments. Is there anybody on who wishes to address something to the planning board that isn't on the agenda? Okay.
Okay.
715, Our Lady of the Lake.
Is there a representative from?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, Alan. Do you want me to?
Are you Ed Shipley?
I am. Yes, sir.
Okay. They, they, actually, Ed, you can, you can talk about it. It's something that the board had looked at a couple of months ago.
Yeah. And I thank you for your time and thank Megan for, I guess she distributed the little sketch that I, that I sent off to her. This is a piece of property that is owned by the Diocese of Springfield. I, I work with Colebrook Realty Services and we represent the diocese in real estate matters. Father Guedi is asked about making a modification to lot number 37. There's currently a single family house on that property. And what he was hoping he could do was take about a 30 foot strip from Sheep pasture road to the back line. And that would give the parish rectory a little bit more of a buffer. There wasn't, their intent is to in time, their intent is to sell the single family home that's on lot number 37. I just did some quick math prior to this meeting and it looks like the strip that they're talking about is about 5,220 square feet. That would reduce lot number 37 from about 37,900 to 32,680. So based on the zoning requirements that I'm looking at in the R20 zone, we're taking a property that's already pre-existing non-conforming and making it even more non-conforming. I just want to tell you that. The frontage on Sheep pasture road is reduced from around 208 feet to 178 feet. In the meantime, if, if, if this is allowed, the square footage would increase by 5220 on lot 36. The street furniture would increase to 230 feet and the parish priest, that's his residence, would have about a 35 or 40 foot buffer between the rectory building, which is the one to this, that's right close to the current line. And so he'd have a little bit more of a buffer between him and the future owners of that property. The reason why I'm here today is kind of reach out to the board and maybe get some direction before we go ahead or we are, before the parish goes ahead and hires a surveyor and gets a, a Form A plot plan put together. Trying to get some sense from the planning board as to whether or not this is, this is doable in your opinion and, you know, what your thoughts are about the changes.
And basically you also went to the zoning board of appeals. You asked them and the zoning board of appeals basically told you to come back and talk to the planning board.
Yes.
And the thing is, it is, it is correct. Right now it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It has enough straight frontage. But it doesn't, it's supposed to have 40,000 square feet and it does not have that. There is, there is a section under non-conforming uses and lots. And if you want, what I can do is I can read it or if there's, basically says a parcel changed, extended or altered only by a special permit granted by the planning board. The planning may, may only grant, but not should not be required to grant such a special permit if it finds that such change, extension or alteration shall be equally or more appropriate to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use of the structure. And that such change, extension or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or structure. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained herein, no special permit shall be granted by the planning board hereunder, which provides for a change, extension or alteration of a non-conforming use or structure outside the original footprint. So I know in the past, you know, the boards looked at it that way and I don't, and this new one, it pertains more to a structure, but by losing the 30 feet, does it really affect any of the structures that immediately abut it? And it doesn't, but it would be making it more non-conforming. Is that correct, Ed?
That is correct. One change that I'd like to note, Alan, is on the plan, you'll see a small outbuilding on lot 37. That was a garage. I don't think it makes any difference relative to distance to the, to the rear line, but that, that building has been raised. So all that's left on there is the, is the house itself.
Okay. It's back to you, Michael.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a, I'm just looking at this map here and trying to.
Okay.
Is that the brick house?
Yeah, it's, it's a brick house. And then there's a little odd little addition towards the right rear or looking at it to the right rear. And that has some sort of vinyl or aluminum siding on it.
I don't think that's a brick house that you can see from Sheep pasture road, Dick.
Yeah, no, this one you can clearly see. And it's right before the, right before the driveway entrance to the South Vic Housing Authority. If you're coming, if you're coming from Depot, going south, it's going to be on your left hand side. Right, that's right after the church. Correct. Rectory building, excuse me.
I'm really disorientated then because the way this plan is showing north is to the right. And
Yeah, if you were to come in.
Is that lot 37, the church?
Yeah, the large, the large building on the lot that's labeled 36 is the church. The building closest to the line is the rectory. And then there's a couple of outbuildings that I'm not, I'm not sure how those are used. One that's along the line and one that's further back, further, further back on that two acre lot. It's almost three acre lot.
Yeah, if you were to come up Depot Street, if you were to come and turn onto Sheep pasture road.
Right.
And then it's going to be on your left hand side. Right across the street is the Davis Farm. And right further to your south is the entrance to the housing authority. The building's been vacant for a couple of years now, I believe.
There was a tenant in there. I believe the parish priest told me that they moved out maybe six months ago. Is my understanding.
Yeah, Marcus, if you were to rotate the map with the north arrow pointing up.
Yeah, if you flip it around, you probably get a better sense of where you are on with Depot Street to your rear, to your back and the property to the left.
Yeah, I understand. Now we're not seeing the whole parcel 36, which
Yeah, you're not seeing that, you're not actually seeing the physical church.
Yeah, that's why I was kind of dis- disorientated. So yes, Dick is right. It's definitely that brick building. It's R40 zone, so it needs to
R20 zone.
Oh, it's R20.
But he's 150 foot frontage.
Okay, so if
It just doesn't have, it just doesn't have 40,000 square feet.
Lot 37.
Lot, yeah, lot 37 has 0.87 acres, which is 37,897 square feet. And so that's why it's a pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay, so by adding this cross.
No, they're going to take that away.
Taking the cross hatch area away. So yeah, okay.
It's going to reduce it down to 32,680 square feet.
It'll have the frontage, but it won't have the
Square footage.
Gotcha.
Let me just, so make sure I have it straight. What is the, what's on 37 right now?
37 has, it's two, it looks like it's two buildings that are closer to Sheep pasture road. There's two buildings touching each other. And then he's saying that the, the most easterly building is no longer there.
Okay. So the one in the back, this thing is flipped. I just, I didn't.
Yeah, the little square one, the little square one is gone.
Okay.
The kind of strange two wing building is still there.
It is.
And that is not occupied.
It is not occupied now. Correct.
But it will be for sale.
That's, that's the intent of the parish. They really don't have any particular use for that building currently.
And what's the zone again, Alan? R?
R20.
So by taking away that 30 feet, they will, they will still have 176 feet. And realistically, I mean, realistically, I, the reason I want to do it, I could see they want to have a buffer from the rectory building. Because if they do sell it, you know, they like to have, at least be able to mow and maintain and who knows, put shrubs up there. And it won't have really, it won't affect the structures of what is remaining there.
But I mean, it's ultimately going to be developed as a residence, I assume.
Most likely, yes.
But we're going to make it more non-conforming if we reduce footage of the lot.
Right. And that's what that's what we had expressed a few months ago informally. And then I, what I read to you was off of the the non-conform use. And that's basically what the zoning board of appeals, they didn't want to grant an appeal. They, they pushed it back on the planning board to, I'm shocked. Yes.
I think you're right, Alan. I mean, it does fall under that. I think that's right. It, you're changing.
It's not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Correct. I mean, it actually is probably more appropriate for it. You know, just the sort of space things out. So I think it does fall under that and probably would be fine under that. But obviously you gotta apply for the special permit for that.
Right. And I think, I think what Mr. Shively wanted to do is before they expended more money.
Yep.
He wanted to have some sort of a clarification of guidance to you.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're just, you're looking for a special permit under section 18528 to, to alter the to alter the lot size, which, you know, continues and makes it more not performing.
Yes.
And that would be, that would be a Form A, you know, an APR, you know, surveyor would have to come up with a more official map. And then you would, then you would apply for the special permit.
What's the possibility of getting a little more? Well, it's a possibility of getting a little bit more land from the Housing Authority, so you get the lot size back up.
Good idea, Dick.
That would be difficult because the, uh, the, the housing, the Housing Authority, it's, um, state-owned, and they're not really obliging to give up any land, because they, they may have something prepared. Right.
Was there a reason for the thirty-foot versus twenty-foot, or whatever? Because, uh, in R twenty, the side setback is only ten feet.
Yeah, there's about eight to ten feet of, of, uh, side yard right now. Um, you know, uh, the parish came up, and Father Guidi came up with that number, just thinking, you know, thirty-five, forty feet would be, uh, you know, a comfortable distance between, he's just looking for some privacy for the rectory down the road. Because once that, uh, residence is sold, you know, it's, somebody can put a swimming pool next to it, it, it's just a lot of, he just has a lot of concerns about what might happen, down the road after the property is sold. So that's, that's really the reason why, um, I'm here tonight is, is to determine or, or, or get some, uh, some direction from the, from the board.
All right, so I mean, I, unless others have.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, uh, if the board felt like, you know, twenty feet was more appropriate, I, uh, I, I think the parish would appreciate that as well. Um, they're just, they're just looking for, just looking for a little more of a, of a cushion.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I mean, I, I don't really care with the number. I, I, it's sort of, um, um, whatever you feel is more comfortable for, for the parish. I, I don't really have a real hard opinion on that. Um, um, you know, like I said, I just think in my mind, looking at that, creating the buffer is, is something that seems appropriate, um, though obviously we'd see the full application when it comes in. But, um, I think that's the process, is to, is to make that application under that section and look for a special permit, but if any board members have any different opinion, I'm happy to, um, consider that. Now, okay.
If I could, if I could make a, make a, just a comment, I'm, I'm Chris Mastiani, I'm, I'm, I'm actually, uh, joining the meeting for, for two, two reasons on the same prop, on the same parcel. I'm a member of the Building Committee of Our Lady of the Lake Church, and, uh, I'm also a member of the Zoning Board. So, uh, Mr. Shively, myself, and, uh, Mr. Gregwire from the, um, zoning board did meet at the site, uh, oh, several, several weeks ago, and looked, and looked at it and talked about uh, what, what Father, uh, Matthew was trying to do, and we all thought it was, uh, a pretty good, a pretty good idea. He, he definitely needs some, some buffer there. I, I will concur that the thirty feet, while not excessive, could, you know, if, if that's a sticking point that, that you, that you would, uh, not wanna grant a special permit, uh, yet that could be probably reduced a little bit, but, uh, but not by much. But, uh, but I, I just wanted, I was interested in the special permit process, and I'm also interested to hear about the, uh, the outcome, so that I can, I can report back to, to Father Matthew. But, uh, it does make the, the prop, from a zoning board point of view, it does make the, the property more non-conforming. Uh, but I, I will agree that it doesn't really adversely affect the neighborhood. The, uh, be- besides the non-conformance of the lot area, there is some, a non-conformance of the front setback, but there's obviously nothing you can do about that. Uh, just for historical context, uh, this, this brick building is, is referred to as the convent. I guess at one time, well before my time in town, it was, it was the convent for the church, so if that, if that helps anyone, uh, locate it in their mind, uh, that's, that's what that was. Um, so that's, that's my comment, that's my reason for, uh, for chiming in here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I think that's, um, wh- where we are. Um, you know, you can, you can touch base with Alan as far as the process.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll talk to Father, get a, get a, um, special permit application. Uh, one question, uh, with that application, A and R plan should be attached, a, a final plan?
Yeah. Yes, you would need, you would need an, a new, an A and R plan because a new deed would have to go with that par, with the parcel on number thirty-seven.
Okay.
And then there'll be a modification also to the deed for number thirty-six for the, the proper ownership.
Right. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate your time, and, um, I'll bother Megan tomorrow, probably, uh, get myself, uh, that form.
Okay, actually, if you, if you go online, a special permit is online.
Yeah, she's, she's covering for you, Megan.
Oh, no.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Night.
All right. Um, seven-thirty, open space memo. Um, uh, so, um, I guess, uh, do, do we have a copy of everything, Alan?
Yes, you do, yes. And it's been reviewed, and, um, it's something, it's something that Dennis, uh, last year brought up to at one meeting. He, he, he diverged from what he was really looking for. And, um, the process continued. And I believe he's got most final, final approval on the open space. But what they like to do is they have letters from other departments saying that the plan is good, and it's in performance with town, uh, usage and format. And they'd asked, he had asked for it a while ago, and he was going to do like a draft, but he never got to that point. So what you're looking at, you're looking at, Megan and I did a small draft.
No, he did a draft. I mean, he was bugging the hell out of me while I was on vacation. And wanted me to send this letter, and I said, I, I don't, one, there's a bunch of stuff going on right now in March, and secondly, you know, I, I, I can't send a letter that says the planning board approves this when the planning board hasn't approved it, so it kinda got deferred after that, um, after some back and forth, but, um, I, I just, I vaguely remember looking at it. I'm not sure, did the planning board look at it and sign off on it and say that they were, I mean, I don't think it's a big deal, but I just, I don't wanna represent something that didn't actually technically happen. Um, that was my issue at the beginning, so I do wanna stay consistent with that, because that was my issue.
Right, David Spino is actually on the open space committee. He's not here tonight. So he, he was a representative for the planning board in the formation of the, um, open space. And then myself, I had actually read for it, gave additional advice, and, uh, marked up. And they took all of my markups and revised them accordingly. And Marcus, where are you, were you involved in the open space at all?
Uh, a while back, I made a few comments, but I wasn't heavily involved, uh, on this latest update.
Um.
Basically, what they did is they, they took one that was ten years old, and they updated it to meet current conditions. So a lot of the, a lot of the verbiage is correct. I'm the same, there's been some added things such as the rails, the trail, um, other open spaces, parcels, uh, the mapping, the mapping is a little, is better, it's clearer for people to understand where their open spaces are in town, and how they can be used. Uh, because before, a lot of people didn't know of all the, I'm, I'm gonna call them mini-parks that were available for passive recreation. And, um, so that, that helped to clear that up. And, uh, and of course, they always, they always have a goal that they wanna try to reach into preserving more open space. The biggest thing is North Pond was included in this new report.
I mean, is that, I guess my, is it something we've seen, we've seen the final version of this?
I don't believe the board has, it's been on, it's been online. Um, I think Dennis reached out, and for people, if it's online, please review it. Um, I don't know if that went.
All right, so can, I, I mean, I guess I'd just say, why don't we just carry this over to the next meeting, and if, and have people review it, and then we will, you know, we, we will, we will send a letter that says we've reviewed it, and, and, you know, sign off on it, and whatever else. Um, you know, and I'll, I'll go back and pull his letter that he sent me in March, and I'll look at your letter that you just, and see if there's anything else that needs to be put into either one, um, to sort of merge them together, and, um, we'll get that out.
I think it would be good for, uh, David Spina to weigh in on it, I mean, he was our representative, so if he's saying this is a decent document, uh, I think it's probably the best planning document we have in the town right now, it's the most current. Uh, and it's been referenced a couple of times already on, uh, properties that people are interested in acquiring, so, acquiring.
Uh, yeah, and I, like I said, I'm sure it's fine, and I'm sure it's, you know, I just, I, I'm hesitant to write a letter that says we've reviewed something and approve it if we haven't reviewed it and approved it, so, um, I suspect it'll take five minutes to do at the next meeting, but I just wanna at least go through.
And I think, uh, we may not use the word approve, may just use the word endorse, or one other words have been for a verb, because I don't know that it's in our purview to approve the plan.
Well, according to Dennis, whether that's right or wrong, according to Dennis back in March, we were required statutorily to endorse or approve or something, I forget what he said in his letter, but he said he can't possibly get this approved by the state until we sign off on it.
Yeah.
Uh, apparently that's not accurate, since he's gotten this signed off on, but, you know, there, so there must be some statutory language that talks about what we're supposed to do. I mean, I can go and look and just see what it is, but I don't, yeah, whatever it is, we'll, we'll use the right terminology, but good, um, that's fine. Uh, okay, um.
So you're gonna put it on, you wanna put it on the, the next meeting's agenda? The only thing we have right now, Megan, is the, um, Verizon Tower, correct? You're, you're muted, Megan.
I know, I am. Um, yeah, that's all we have on there right now, that's fine, we can add it.
All right, so we'll just throw it at the end, and we can look through it. Um, if you can, just send around, if you guys can find it online, the final version of it, and just shoot it around to the planning board members, so they can take a look at it before the next meeting, that'd be great.
Okay.
All right, um, seven-forty-five, ground-mounted solar for three-twelve North Loomis Streets. Um, all right. I have a couple of maps here, I can try to pull up if you give me a minute. Well, here, why don't I share the letter first? We can save Alan some time, I think. All right, can everybody see this letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, can see it.
All right, so this is what he's looking for. Ground-mounted solar. Um, what, uh, is it, what's the, what is the language of it? Is it, is it saying less than a thousand? Is that what the, uh?
Well, it, it, in the, uh, in our bylaw.
Yeah.
Thousand, a thousand, one second, I'll just turn it to it.
Where is it? Twenty-three-two, uh?
Twenty-three-two.
But, large scale is a thousand square feet or greater. Okay, so.
So a thousand square, so if it's less than a thousand square feet, they just have to get a site plan review.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, he can take an inch off of one side, and it'll be fine. Um.
That's gonna be nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine square feet.
Point nine, yeah, no, I, you know, um, I, I, I'm not gonna get too worked up at that, um. So, um, you know, we can just say it'll be the maximum amount allowed under the bylaw. Um.
And just, just, there is, the side, the side yard for an accessory use is ten feet from the side, as well as ten feet from the rear property. And he's saying that the, um, it's actually twenty feet. So it appears that he's opening, but we, we, it should be clarified that it should be a thousand feet, or less.
Um. Okay, so he has something there now on this map here. Like, he doesn't really show that, but there's something there now, and it's just being enlarged.
Right, and the conversations I had with him on the phone, he had one row of solar before the, before the solar bylaw was, came into effect. So, um, it pre-existed. You can't use the word grandfather anymore, it's not allowed in, in the legal technology.
Yeah, well, we'll take care of that, uh, uh, we gotta deal with that, but, uh, all right, so let me, um, anything else you wanna add, Alan, 'cause I think the applicant, I see the name of Courtney Caruso on here, I, I don't know if that's the applicant or not, I assume it is.
Darren Caruso. Darren is the one who sent the, um, sent the application as well as sketch.
Okay.
And it's three-twelve North Loomis.
Under my, under my watch.
Okay, Darren, is that?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you guys can hear me, but I'm, I'm on here.
Okay, perfect. Um, um, all right, is there anything else you wanna add to it, other than what we've talked about it and looked at?
Um, my connection cut out for a minute or two, so I, I didn't hear everything, but essentially, like you said, I, I've got a small system now that I'd like to add on to. And, um, I think it falls within all the requirements as far as setbacks. Um, you know, my diagram shows that a little bit, it's, um, it's inside the, the fenced-in backyard, so it's pretty removed from the road. Um, kinda sheltered by trees from the nearest neighbor, so I, I don't think it would be a big issue for any neighbors, but certainly wanna get approval from the board.
Okay, um, and you have, what's the size of the one you have now?
Uh, square footage-wise or wattage? Uh, it's about, about two-hundred-and-fifty square feet.
Okay. All right, so I mean, it's not an insignificant-sized one now, um, it's got some size to it.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, any questions by board members for the applicant? Or comments?
Project will not exceed a thousand feet, including the two-fifty he already has up, is that correct?
Correct, the total system would be less than a thousand square feet.
Have you spoken to the neighbors at all? I mean, you could just, as a friendly neighbor thing, or not?
You know, I've had the neighbor in my yard before, he's seen my panels, I did not talk to him recently about adding on, I could certainly do that, he's a nice guy.
You're gonna quadruple your size the way he's looking at it now, so I don't know, I don't know if they can see it from there, else or not, I don't know.
Uh, like I said, there's actually some trees and, and bushes in between, so I don't think it would, it would change their view really, at all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Basically, for a reference point, a fifty, a fifty by twenty feet is like a, a size of a built-in pool, swimming pool. Approximately. Are we still there, Michael?
I think we're frozen.
Is he still there? Am I, oh, you, can you hear Mike?
Mike is frozen.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Oh, okay.
Back here.
Oh, there's another Michael Doherty now.
Yeah, hold on.
Evil twin.
Yeah. All right. Give me one minute. Let me just, I don't know what happened here. There we go.
Doug's fault. Whatever happens, Doug's fault.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's obvious. We don't, I don't need to call him out. Um, okay, I'm sorry about that. Um, um, all right. Any other, um, board comments? No? Okay. Um, let me just see here. Just look at this bylaw and see if there was anything else that I noted. Okay. You said, let me just pull up that thing again. You said that there's, there's bushes or trees or something between your property and the neighbor's property?
Correct.
Okay.
It's, is there, um, trees in between your property next to you as well as the one behind you on Arcadia?
Uh, the, there are trees behind, behind, at the backside of my property and then the house behind me on Arcadia is really set back. So it's, it'll be pretty far from, from his house. He's got like five acres, I think.
All right. Hold on. I want to make sure there's nothing else that we need to look at. Okay. All right. Any other questions on board?
As our reservation is that with the neighbor, I mean, this, I mean, I understand the gentleman, what he wants to do and it's totally within the bylaw, but I think positive response from a neighbor would probably be, you know, helpful maybe, I don't know. I mean, maybe it's not required, but would you want to put it in your back, I mean, in your neighbor's backyard? I don't know.
Yeah, let me just go, I mean, is there? Alan, were there two, were there two, um, maps here?
No, there was just, there was just the one map.
There's just one? Okay. Oh, yeah, okay.
I understand he's well within the bylaw limitations. And.
No, but you still have to, I mean, you still.
I would, I would suspect because judging from his north arrow, the panels would be more facing towards his house. So if there's anything that was seen, it would be the back of the panels. Is that correct, Mr. Caruso?
That is exactly correct, yes.
Cause he's, he wants to be, he wants to be turned in the south, southeastward direction to pick up. So his, his array will be looking at what's called, we'll call it the garage.
Correct.
Yep.
All right.
They wouldn't be getting a reflectiveness to his, um, to his closest neighbor. I'm not sticking on, just giving facts.
No, and I'm just trying to look, I mean, I, if I, I'm just looking at Google Maps here just to get a sense of where this is. So I mean, you have, there's also a decent distance between, between your property line and the neighbor's house. I mean, they have entire side yard on that side.
And their garage is on that side of the house, so I don't even think they have any windows looking out that side of the house.
Okay.
Okay. You know, and it's not, it's not, you know, completely like a line of hedges or anything to block everything, but it's a decent, decent old growth that's in between there. Uh, not old growth, but decent sized growth that's between there, at least according to Google Maps.
Yep.
And typically the backs of the panels are about five feet tall. Sloping towards south.
All right. So I mean, I guess what I'd say is, what, this is submitted as a site plan review, Alan?
Yes. So what we typically do is we have that rubber stamp, we stamp it, you know, approved, and then there's signatures, but because we're on Zoom, would that, if you, if you were to vote on it, it would be orally as well as on tape. Would I be authorized to sign it and then give it to the building department?
We'll just, what we'll do is we'll just, um, authorize you to sign for us. You know, you just, what you, what you do is just sign my name, put a slash and then put your initials.
Right.
So you know who signed it. Um, and we'll just do that while we vote here.
Yeah, because it's not a special permit or it doesn't have to be filed with the registry.
Right. Um, I mean, I guess I would say, you know, as a site plan review, you know, maybe we can put a note on there at least. I'm just looking at the site plan review section here, but, um, which is what, 37? Well, actually, let me back, I'm sorry, let me back up to what I said before. It did go out to the neighbor, correct?
Um, my request?
No, we don't.
This, oh, no, it's a site and review, it's a site plan review.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not going to go out under, right?
It won't go out as a, as a special permit for all the.
Yeah, right. Okay. Okay, so I'm just trying to see what we can do here. I mean, I think it's probably worthwhile. I, I think we're allowed to do it as I'm reading this, but tell me if anybody thinks I'm wrong, which is just note onto the plan. You know, that, that, whatever word you want to use, reasonable or appropriate, vegetation, you know, to be maintained between the properties. But, you know, I, I assume since there's already some there, you know, 250 square feet, like I said, isn't that, I mean, this is certainly making it four times that size, but 250 is not a small area of that. To, but just a note on there that, you know, some reasonable vegetation will be maintained between the, the properties to, to shield it a little bit. I think that's, can be done on a site plan review and then marked as recommended by the board as, you know, with, with what's noted on the plan.
Right. I can do, what I can do is I can do that on the, I'll enclose both pages, but actually on the one that has pictures, I can make a note that vegetation buffer should be, remain in effect.
Yeah.
To feel for the property and vote, well, I guess I haven't voted yet, voted on this September the 8th, 2020.
Which way is the solar panels facing, by the way?
Uh, they're facing south.
Now, is it, is it feasible to put vegetation between?
Well, you don't want vegetation on, on the south side.
Is it on the, is your vegetation that you have on there now, is it on the opposite side of the solar panels capturing area?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So having a vegetation behind is not going to impact your solar's ability to create power?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, no, fair question. Yeah, no, that's, uh, we certainly want to, want to impact that, but, okay. All right. All right. So that would be my suggestion. If anybody has any suggestions or comments on that or pushback on that, please let me know. Mr. Caruso, does that seem appropriate to you? Or do you have any comments on that?
No, no, I think that's reasonable. And, you know, I hadn't thought about it too much from the neighbor's perspective, but I feel better thinking about the fact that his garage is on that side of the house. He doesn't really have any, any windows there, so I don't think it would, um, change his view, but the vegetation, uh, does help if he's outside, so I, I don't have any.
I'm going to look at the idea of putting stipulations on, on a bylaw that's already in place, and then we come up with stipulations to join in on it. You're going to, you're going to start down a slippery slope where somebody's going to start saying, well, we need to put vegetation between the solar panel and somebody else's property on everyone.
Well, but this is, I mean.
No, I know what you're saying, Mike, that this was an idea that we could ask for, or asking for it. We're not mandated.
I mean, I guess I'd say this, which is, this is one that is, you know, an inch below a large scale system. Um, you know, I think that's a little different than, you know.
It should be added in the bylaw.
What should be added to the bylaw?
That vegetation needs, that a vegetation boundary needs to be put between a solar array and somebody else's property.
Well, I mean, that is in for the large scale.
Landscape and landscape buffer.
Yeah, I mean, one, it's typically in there for the large scale, but it's also generally in there for a site plan review for small scale. I mean, I, you know, I, I, I don't.
I just don't want to see this opening up a can of worms that everybody at the table is going to start mandating what they want to put around the solar array, so nobody might see it. Because say, what, what if his system did face the opposite way and now you need to put some boundaries in? How are you going to put up something that's going to block the view and still capture the sun? Now, that's, that's where I'm going with this.
But that wouldn't be a good design for a solar system.
Right. But I know in my yard, I took down trees to make sure my solar system properly worked. So now if you, if you clear an area and you put a solar system in, now you've got to put some kind of vegetation so nobody can see it. It just defeated the purpose of putting your solar system in. And you don't want to go out and spend 50 grand for nothing.
Well, I, I guess my feeling is that if it wasn't the obligation of the planning board to look at things like this on small scale, there wouldn't be a site plan review for those. They'd just be by right. But they're, but they're not by right. I mean, they're, they're, there, there's a site plan review and I, I mean, you got to have, I think you got to have some.
Falls within the purview of the, of the bylaw.
Say that again?
That falls within the purview of the bylaw. I just, I'm just, I'm just making an overall point, Mike. Not just this one case, but what if somebody decides to use this case down the road? Well, they may do it. I'm going to make this guy do it. That's all.
I get it. I mean, I, I get it. I just think, you know.
That's how snowballs get bigger. Well, I think we should say maintain existing vegetation. We're not requiring him to make any new plantings. I mean, that, that is within the purpose of the bylaw overall. But I agree with Dave that we shouldn't be imposing additional things as far as plantings. Just maintain existing vegetation.
Well, I, I guess, then what's the point of a site plan review?
Well, we'll make it sure that it's proper distance from boundaries and property lines and to make sure the size of the system is what it's supposed to be.
So it's an A and R, basically?
Pretty much. As long as it falls within the guidelines of the bylaw, but we shouldn't be adding on to it stating that we need to stop throwing vegetation in.
But isn't it part of our zoning bylaw that we have a say on what happens when it comes to land clearing, natural vegetation, landscaping, landscape buffer strips for both small and large. Large, it's a bit more specific and we can require more in a certain timeline, but it's written in our bylaw that we're supposed to look at this. Or am I not reading it right?
I, I, I mean, I,
I've got the book here, Dave. Do you, do you disagree?
So let's ask. I'm not disagreeing, Jessica, but I am making a point about overextending our keep.
I don't think we, we, we asked him to install and.
Because we can, doesn't always mean that we should.
I mean, I, you know, Dave, I guess I just, I'm reading, if the planning board finds that the use of structures or site improvements will be detrimental to the community, the planning board shall modify the plan accordingly, right? I mean, isn't that basically saying if you're,
Yes, yeah.
If it's going to be.
The important thing about this whole thing, Mike, is just to make sure that this doesn't become an everyday occurrence. So well, now we're going to start imposing on stipulations on people when they're putting in a, a system in their backyard. I want to make sure that, that down the road, some guy down the street has a system facing south, he takes his trees down so he can capture his power. And now we're going to make him put the trees back up because he played with the vegetation.
But then he wouldn't have appropriately applied with, to the safety and environmental standards by not cutting down all of his trees first.
There is, please. We, we, you know, we just keep stepping on people's toes left and right. Every time you turn around, we're taking away somebody's inevitable rights. This is their property. They purchased it. They have plans for it. They can do what they want to do with it. They paid the taxes on it. They earned the money to keep it. And then we can walk in and just.
Why, why are we here?
Um, no. It gets to a point where it's going to be a little ridiculous. Don't give me the hand.
Can I make a suggestion or comment?
Because if this is the way this planning board is going to run, then Jessica, you can have my spot.
All right.
All right, so, Mr. Caruso, if you want to weigh in, please.
All right. Well, I guess my comment would, would be, if I was looking at it from the board's perspective, maybe that, right, you reviewed the, the setbacks and the size of the system and the fact that there was existing vegetation and that wouldn't, uh, really alter the view from the neighbor's perspective and, and maybe leave it at that without putting anything in there about maintaining. I mean, I have no, there's no reason for me to take down that vegetation because it blocks my view of their garage as well. And the vegetation's been there for probably 20 or 30 years.
Yeah. So I mean, I, you know, just, I, I think keep in mind, this in my mind at least is a more analytical, theoretical discussion, uh, and not really down to your property. I mean, I, I'm not sure anybody has an issue. I, I mean, just look, like I said, I looked it up on Google Maps, so that's the extent of my knowledge, but, uh, and I'm not you, but looking at it, I don't see any reason why you'd be taking down those trees. I think they're probably sufficient buffer between the properties. I, I, I think all of that is fine. You know, this is, I think, more of a bigger discussion about the process than anything else. Um, you just happen to be the, the application that is, uh, triggering it.
That's fine. One, one other question. Is there anything in there like regarding, um, structures, sheds or things like that that go on properties? They may not be a thousand square feet, but they're certainly a lot taller and more noticeable in my opinion. So I guess I would look to maybe treat it somewhat similar.
Yeah, I mean, there are, the same idea is going to apply to certain, to, to some degree. I mean, I think there's a size, you know, I think when you get to a certain size, there's going to be, review of that, but, well, I mean, I guess the question then is, what's the language that is going to be acceptable to the board to get? I mean, I think there has to be some acknowledgement of what's there. And there should be some kind of buffer between, I mean, I, I, if I didn't have any buffer, I mean, I happen to have buffers between my neighbors, but if I didn't and someone put up a thousand square feet solar panels, you know, 10 feet from the property line, wouldn't be thrilled about it. So, you know, I, I, you know, I, I think that's the purpose of the site plan review is to see whether there's issues, because it's not like there are butters and they're getting, they're getting notice of this to participate in it. I mean, this is on the planning board, and perhaps that's the change that should be made, is that a butter should have a say in it, and if there's not an issue, then, then there's not an issue, but, um, I don't know, I, I, I guess I look at it differently, that if you're required to do a site plan review, then this is part of it. So, I mean, is language that, you know, something to the effect of maintaining an appropriate buffer, you know, which the planning board acknowledges exists currently? Is that something that's fine, or no?
Couldn't you just use the terminology that, um, it's recommended to keep the existing buffer as shown? Rather than dictating, you know, it's a recommendation. How about to maintain a buffer, not kids original, how about to maintain a buffer?
So for the applicant question, you, you have an existing, uh, unit now, solar panels?
Correct, yes.
And you're adding additional square footage to bring it up to just under 1,000 square feet?
Right, right. And, um, I don't think this affects anything, but I'll just put it out there now. I'm looking at building it up slowly, so it might go from 250 to 450 square feet in the next few months, and then next year I might add a little more. So realistically, I wouldn't be taking up the full 1,000 square feet probably for a couple of years, so I don't know if that helps or not, but it would be kind of small incremental additions.
And, and the existing unit is in the location where you're, you're gonna add to it?
Correct.
So the existing unit is at the location adjacent to the property next door. You're gonna go away from that existing unit? I'm trying to.
I'll go, I'll go a little bit further toward the back property line. Uh, probably 15, well, let's call it 18 feet further toward the back property line and about 15 feet closer to the north property line. Um, my diagram says it'll be a 10-foot buffer, but there will still be at least 20 feet between the panels and the property line, uh, the way I'm gonna have it.
So the motion would be to, uh, approve the site plan for up to a consolidated.
1,000 square feet.
Consolidated square footage of less than 1,000 square feet and to maintain the existing vegetation.
Uh, you know, I guess let's do it this way at this point. I, I'll make a motion to, to do it just the way Marcus said. And, um, do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ossinger, aye.
Dave? Sutton? You're on mute.
David Sutton, aye. Technology.
Take a sandwich.
Okay. All right, so.
So you have four.
All right, so that's, so I think that's, you know, we'll use that language.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll stamp it, put the necessary on it, on the plan part, and then, um, Mr. Caruso, you can either come in, or I can give it to the building department, because we're gonna have to come in and take out a electrical permit to go along with that also. As far as you'll want to be looking at your footings to make sure that there's significant footings to hold it from being lifted like a, like a kite.
So, question for you there, there. I'm, um, working with an electrician that would come in and do some of the wiring. Would he take out that electrical permit, or do you want me to come down to do that?
Well, you're not a licensed electrician.
Yeah, you would have to.
Yeah, I'd have to be the licensed electrician.
Okay, so do I need to come down at all, or he'll just take care of that permit?
I'm sure if you give him the money for correct amount of money, he'll, he'll be glad to get the permit.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Sounds good.
So what I'll do is tomorrow, I'll put that verbiage on there, and I'll just give it to the building. They will hold on to it. So it's difficult because of the virus to get people to sign and pass things back and forth. But they will go out of, they will go out of their way and meet them downstairs, outside, to take out the necessary permit.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Caruso. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
All right. Uh, routine business. Um, everybody look at the minutes. Everybody okay with the minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Marcus Phelps, so moved to approve the minutes.
I was not at the meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Dave, is it you?
I will second.
But I'll, I'll second it.
No, that's right. I was just thinking about that. I'll second it. We'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay. All right, so, and what we'll do, um, let's just put this on the record so that we're clear, both with the signatures on the site plan review, um, for North Loomis as well as for the minutes. You know, with the site plan review, by your vote, you're authorizing Alan to sign for you, you know, with his initials, and through this, you're authorizing, um, Megan to put in your signature, uh, electronic signature in the, in the minutes. Is everybody okay with that?
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so, um, I think that's all we have for tonight. Is there anything else we need to talk about?
When is the next meeting?
The 22nd of September, so two weeks.
So, so the first thing on the agenda will be the Verizon cell tower, and then the next thing will be,
We'll just take care of the.
The open space memo. If people look at them, look at the open space. It's online. Um, I'll have Dennis give that to Megan so she could then pass it. Since we're talking about future meetings, um, we still have outstanding things on the, on the agenda. One would be the sign modification to a sign bylaw, and then the other one is looking at the modification to the solar bylaw.
Yes, so, well, do we have anything after? Well, let's do this. Um, do we have anything on for that meeting after the 22nd? We do, don't we?
Nothing yet, but I would suspect that the cell tower is gonna be continued.
Yeah, I just don't know whether it's gonna be continued to the next meeting, right? I mean, I, I I could be wrong. I'm just one member, but, um, I think they need to do a recent balloon test and advertise it and tell people about it, um, which you've communicated to them over and over again, um, and they're not doing, so, you know.
They did one without anyone knowing about it. That doesn't help. It doesn't help anybody at all.
Right, so I mean, I suspect that that'll come up at the first meeting. I'm not sure they're gonna get it done in the two-week period of time and have it there. So I just, I'm not sure that we're gonna go September 22nd and then just continue to whatever, October, whatever it is, 7th, um, so, or 6th. So, that's, I just, um, but at the same time, I kinda wanna, that cell tower is the first, you know, the community-wide, you know, public hearing that we're having, and I kinda wanna get a sense of how that plays out before we start in on the bylaws. Um, so my inclination is to wait until the next meeting and then probably start putting on those bylaws at that point in time and, and sort of work through those over the winter. You know, we're not gonna, Doug, is there, is there any, is there any, um, talk about doing a special meeting at any, anytime soon, or no?
No.
Okay, all right. So I mean, that's not a, that's not a pressing matter to begin with. It's probably not gonna be taken care of till next spring.
Be pretty cold in the school parking lot come November.
You can do like a drive-in, Doug. I have those speakers I put on your window.
Exactly. For motocross. Um, all right, so, um, all right, so that's what I think, I mean, unless anybody has objections or suggestions otherwise, uh, let's see what happens next week or two weeks from now with the Verizon. See how that goes along, see when that's gonna be continued to, um, you know, assuming that that works out decently. We can try to work in those bylaw public hearings, um, and, and work through those over the winter.
Also, one other thing I got a call today. On Tannery Road, there's a large parcel of land. If you're going Tannery Road towards Westfield before the, um, before that really escrow bridge, somebody is asking questions about a possible subdivision going in there also. It's a parcel that's been vacant for quite some time. And it's, uh, a realtor had somebody draw a cartoon of what she thought could go in there, but it failed, but it mentioned open space, wetlands, steep slopes, you know, is, she's, she's trying to market it to get somebody, they're trying to put it on the market for a million three, I think it is. But that's just, that's, nothing's been coming formally.
Tell me, I mean, tell me again what the issue is with the, with the, um, town water, how that's gonna play out? I mean, how are they, how are they dealing with that as it relates to?
They already voted that, Mr. Chairman.
They what?
The Water Commission already voted the moratorium in.
So what's the moratorium specifically?
No new water connection.
For what period of time?
Uh, I don't believe they put a date on the end of it just yet. I'd have to review the minutes. I was at the meeting when they voted it, because they, uh, they're at their maximum amount of water. The problem we had is everybody watering during a drought and a lot more people at home during the day that are normally not home, so water consumption is at an all-time record high right now in the town. And so they're approaching their withdrawal permit amounts.
Okay, I'm just trying to, so the moratorium is on new developments using town water?
Correct, I believe so.
The Greens, the Greens East and the Greens West were already approved, and they stay below that threshold of a maximum volume of, you know, being used. From what I understand, Randy said it's not going to stop one home or two homes. It's just the one on Depot, you know, it's gonna be in the realm of 50 to 60 homes.
And then the one on Tannery. I mean, either of those come in, they, I guess, how do we handle them?
I don't think Tannery has public water.
Same thing, guys. Stay in your lane, right? Stay in your lane.
That's, well, no, but there's two choices we have to stay in our lane. One is, we're not gonna consider this until such time as that moratorium lifted, or we're gonna additionally grant it or conditionally whatever, and you have to wait until the moratorium is lifted.
It's just like, well, it's not my place, right, Mr. Chairman, but my, my opinion is, you hear it, right? They have to submit a subdivision plan with dry water lines, and/or they can put in wells and septics until such a time as they could have connections, right? And they could, they could provide for it in their, in their design. I mean, there's plenty of subdivisions that went in in the 80s and 90s that have water lines in them, and sewer lines. That, and the sewer lines are just junk in the ground right now because they never got used, right? But that was a requirement of the planning board, and so same thing goes here. Now, a developer may say, hey, this isn't feasible without city water. We can't do this with wells and septics, but that's, that's up to the developer to decide. But if someone was to come in and, and, you know, want to do all the groundwork so that when the town ever, when, when the time comes that the, the town gets a better withdrawal quantity, or they're able to get Springfield water, or, or what have you, to increase capacity through the system, they can just go ahead and they'll be ready to go, right? They'll be almost shovel-ready. So that's all timing, but I wouldn't, you know, you could certainly, as the planner, could certainly consult with someone and say, hey, before you go spend any money on laying plans out, you might want to go talk to the water guys, but, you know, if someone comes in and knowing all of that says, I want to go for my subdivision approval, here we are with wells and septics. Let's go.
And they were.
Or wells, and, and, you know, they might do a communal well for some, like even, I don't know about Depot, you know, Depot Street, I'm picking at random, right? Somebody comes in with a 10-lap subdivision, they may go put in a well for the subdivision on their own, and they say, okay, we got, we don't need city water, we're gonna do our own. Here you go.
Well, I guess, I would say, I mean, I mean, I get that. I, I just think that, you know, Alan's gonna become a point person for these things, obviously, by the nature of them, and so.
And he's such a good guy.
Well, and, but I, the first thing, whenever I have these meetings, I always recommend they call fire, police, and Randy, and local, because he's in charge of water and sewer. And, um, and then I, once I heard, learned of the moratorium as a courtesy, I called Rob Lovex's office and told them that he really should talk to Rob, um, talk to Randy, which I think they had a Zoom meeting today on that.
Okay. All right.
Michael, I had an item on the, uh, subcommittee formation.
Yes.
I think, uh, somehow we need to get the word out to the public as far as having a list of people that are interested in being on that subcommittee. Alan said he already got one person from the public, but it seems to me we should put a notice out, I don't know, Channel 15? Uh, where do people see things and learn about things?
How have we done it in the past?
It was put in the Westfield EV News to list them, you know, a public hearing. It's, it goes, goes file at the Town Court's office or at the outside bulletin board.
No, it's not a, it's not a public hearing. This is the subcommittee.
No, but how have we done, I mean, we've done, we've done some committees on solar, on Common Driveway, on what, I mean, how have that, how has that been done in the past? Because there's been public members on all of those, haven't there?
Yes, there has been, yeah.
So how?
It was when reporters used to show up for the meetings, too.
I mean, at a minimum, I would say,
Channel 15.
Channel 15, and talk to the Field News reporter, Alan, and, uh, I mean, I don't know, word of mouth. I can, I mean, that's the way it happens.
I, I have, um, sorry, Mr. Chairman. One is, um, I think I got plopped on that subcommittee and.
Yes, you did, Mr. Mowgli. Congratulations.
And two is, I got another member of the public, if you want one. Who emailed me looking for something to do.
There you go.
So, if that'll help you.
Just have them submit something into, you know, email or whatever.
I already have it. I'll send it over to you. He just said anything, so.
I think we were looking.
Careful what he wished for, I guess.
But you should, you should have at least one or two members of the planning board also.
Yeah, no, we'll, um, we, I think the letter went out, right, to the, to the various?
It did, and each one of a, a letter was also sent to each board member. This should be in your email.
Yep. Okay.
I mean, we're, we're shooting, we're hoping to have an odd number, so I could, we either gonna have two or three public people, right? Citizens, whatever.
All right, well, why don't? All right. Well, why don't we, why don't you arrange to get it on Channel 15? And Alan, if you could just reach out to Westfield Evening News or, you know, whoever and, and see if they can run something on it. That would be great. And then we'll, we'll talk about it at the, at the next meeting. We'll just carry it over on routine business.
All right.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Mr. Sutton?
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Marcus Phelps, second.
We'll do a roll call vote again. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ossinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.